All meeting's ordered. Everybody can turn on their mics, please. And start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna start with the reopening of public hearing for the Tamrac Reserve. The proposed five cabins are gonna be put in down there. At this point, do we have people that would like to make public comment?
We have no further comments. My name's Rich Renia, the engineer for the project. I think that we had opened the public hearing at the last time and we were waiting for the circulation to be completed and for all those responses to come back in and we've received those and there was nothing saying, nobody wanted to take lead agency and nobody asked for any changes to the project.
And nobody else present wants to make any comment related to the project? Okay, at this point, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this point, we need to go ahead and complete the full environmental assessment form. I'm gonna go ahead and read through it and we'll note the responses as we go along. First part request, it talks about the impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical altercation of the land surface of the proposed site. The obvious answer there is yes. Under that heading, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. No or small impacts may occur. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
As I go through this, if anybody has any concerns or questions, speak up, please. Proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. Again, no or small impact may occur. Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. Again, no or small impact may occur. Proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. No. And again, this no includes or small impact may occur. So just so I don't have to repeat everything all the time. Proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. No. Proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. No, small impact. Proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. No. Other impacts? No. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, for example cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves. I have no on that. Does anybody have any concerns otherwise? Number three, impacts on surface water. Proposed actions may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, e.g. streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. I'm gonna go through this part as a possible yes, due to the location of the stream. Proposed action may create a new body, new water body? No. Proposed action may result in the increase or decrease of over 10% or more than a 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water? No. Proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body? No. Proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in bed or banks of any other water body? No. Proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion, runoff, or by disturbing bottom sediments? No. Proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water? No. Proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water? No. Proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead through siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies? No. Proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of proposed action? No. Proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in and around any water body? No. Proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities? No. Other impacts? None. Impact on groundwater. Proposed action may result in or new, in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to the groundwater or an aquifer. There will be use of groundwater through wells? I'm gonna say yes. Proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells? No. Water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe or sustainable withdrawal capacity rate of the local supplier aquifer? No. Proposed action may allow or result in residential, in residential uses in areas without water and sewer services? No. Proposed ma, proposed action may include or require wastewater discharges to groundwater? No. Proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is or susceptible to be contaminated? No. Proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or aquifer? No. Proposed action may involve the commercial application of pesticides within 100 feet of the potable drinking water or irrigation sources? No. Other impacts? No. Impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding? No. Impacts on air. Proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source? No. Impact on plants and animals. Proposed action may result in a loss of floral or fauna. Again, I'm gonna indicate yes here because there will be disturbance to ground. Proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site? No. Proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used, used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government? No. Proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site? No. Proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need as listed by New York State? Or the federal government? No. Proposed action may diminish the capacity of the registered natural, national natural landmark to support biological community it was established to protect? No. Proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural, natural community? No. Proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species protected by the use of the project site? No. Proposed action requires conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat? No. Proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects involves use of herbicides or pesticides? No. Other impacts? No. Impact on agricultural resources? Proposed action may impact agricultural resources. I'm gonna indicate no here. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use for proposed actions are obvious, obviously different from or in sharp contrast to the current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource? No. Impact on historic and archaeological resources? Proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource? No. Impact on open space and recreation? Proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan? No. Impact on critical environmental areas? Proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area? No. Impact on transportation? Proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems? No. Impact on energy? Proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy? No. Impact on noise, odor, and light? Proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting? Yes, only due to there is some outdoor lighting there. Proposed action may reduce sound above noise levels established by local regulation? No. Proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 foot of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home? No. Proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day? No. Proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties? No. Proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than the existing area conditions? No. Other impacts? No. Impact on human health? Proposed action may have an impact on human health through exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants? No. Consistency with community plans? Proposal action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Not consistent with adopted land use plans. No. Consistency with community character? Proposed project is inconsistent with existing community character? No. That ends the full environmental assessment form review. All right, moving on from there is the resolution declaring lead agency in adopting negative declaration under the state environmental called the Review Act, secret for Tamrac Reserve, which I'm gonna have Secretary Reed in.
Now therefore be resolved as follows. The planning board hereby designates itself as secret lead agency for the project and the planning board issues a secret negative declaration for the project concluding that the project will not create any significant adverse environmental impacts and a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared and the planning board adopts and incorporates herein by reference the attached written negative declaration for the project and the planning board directs the attached negative declaration to be filed, distributed, and published as required by the secret regulations, section six NYCRR 617.12. The foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board voting and signing as follows. Joseph Fontaine?
Yes.
Pete Clair?
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos?
Yes.
Nathan Roy?
Yes.
Anthony Robesteli?
Yes.
Eric McEnroe?
Yes.
Bill Proger?
Yes.
Pass this around, please sign by your name.
And then we have the resolution approving amended special use permit and site plan related to Tamrac Reserve cabin.
Now therefore be resolved in accordance with the section 121-64 of the zoning code that the planning board hereby grants the amended special use permit requested by the applicant subject to the following conditions, which must be satisfied unless otherwise stated prior to the stamping and signing of the site plans by the planning board chairman. One, the applicant shall address the comments for the planning board engineer in her review memo dated August 19th, 2014, to the satisfaction of the engineer and her planning board. The applicant, two, the applicant shall provide a copy of the final sanitary septic system design drawings and the final Dutchess County Department of Health approval permits for the system and the new well. Number three, the applicant shall provide the final New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Wetland Disturbance Permit to construct the access driveway and stormwater control measures within the 100 feet adjacent area of the state regulated wetlands. Number four, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any cabin, the applicant shall provide a copy of the recorded deed covenant for the permanent stormwater measures on the site as required by the New York State D.C. S.P.D.E.S. general permit for stormwater discharges for construction activities, G.P.-0-10-001. Number five, the applicant shall provide structural calculations in detail for any retaining walls to be constructed more than four feet high. Such calculations shall be approved by the planning board engineer. Number six, the applicant shall provide final approval of the project plans by the town of the Umenia Fire Department and submit any revised plans requested by the fire department. Number seven, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act unless it can prove to the code enforcement officer that it is exempt from these requirements as truly private club under federal state, federal and state law. The applicant shall submit any revised plans complying with the ADA. Number eight, prior to the issuance of a CBO for any cabin, the applicant shall provide as-built plans for all new improvements on the site as required by section 121-68 of the zoning code. Number nine, the applicant shall pay all outstanding invoices for the planning board's consultants. Number 10, the cabins will be used solely for overnight use by members and guests of members of Tamrac Reserve. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the applicant's site plans prepared by ready and engineering, including but not limited to the following: overall parcel and lands use map, last revised April 7th, 2014; site grading and utilities plan, last revised July 28th, 2014; access driveway profile, last revised June 13th, 2014; erosion and sediment control plan, last revised July 28th, 2014; erosion and sediment control and stormwater detail, last revised July 28th, 2014; and SWIP, last revised August 4th, 2014. And be it further resolved that the pursuant to section 121-63B of the zoning code, the planning board issues the attached findings in support of the amended special use permit and site plan approval. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the planning board chairperson to stamp and sign the site plans upon the applicant's satisfaction of all applicable conditions set forth herein and be it further resolved that in accordance with section 121-62H of the zoning code, this amended special use permit shall expire if, one, the amended special use permit use ceases for more than 24 consecutive months for any reason; two, the applicant fails to obtain the necessary building permits or fails to comply with the conditions of the amended special use permit, if any, within 12 months of his issuance; or three, its time limit, if any expires without renewal; and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the town of Umenia Town Clerk within five days of the date of this resolution and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. The foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board voting and signing as follows. Joseph Fontaine?
Yes.
Pete Clair?
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos?
Yes.
Nathan Roy?
Yes.
Anthony Robesteli?
Yes.
Eric McEnroe?
Yes.
Bill Proger?
Yes.
Sign by your name, please. Did I get my last one?
There's a EAF on the left side. I believe that concludes the review of the Tamrac application.
Thank you very much and thank you for your attention to detail on that project.
Thank you. Yeah, at this point, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the, we're gonna have a couple things, a presentation by Silo, some board discussion. But I'd like to start off by talking, having the members talk about the site visit that occurred about a week, week and a half ago. I wasn't present for that site visit, but everybody else was. I'd just like to get everybody's info as to what transpired. I mean, first off, I wanna confirm that there were no discussions involving this project during that site visit?
No.
Is that accurate, or?
I have no idea what was allowed and what isn't allowed in the site visit. I mean, it was totally unclear. I didn't say anything. I mean, I tried not to say anything.
Okay. Well, before the last meeting, when we talked about having the site visit, it was mentioned that during the site visit, you can't be discussing?
Yeah, but I wouldn't say that nobody should say anything. People were talking.
Well, they're talking, but they shouldn't be discussing the direction of the project or making decisions relating to the project.
Just factual information. Larissa did a very good job keeping everyone focused.
Okay. Well, what about the site visit itself? Were there?
I think it was very good.
Really? Get productive. Be able to see what's going on.
Okay. Were there any particular concerns anybody had in what they saw?
Not concerns, but, you know?
No.
It was just good to see, you know, more of a, more so a piece of paper, go out there and really get a, you know, good bird's eye perspective of things, especially looking over Delverne Hill and visuals from there.
And the concerns that the folks had in regards to construction on steep slopes, got to see where those houses were going to be located, how they determined to locate one of those houses were gonna go, so.
Can you speak in the microphone? I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. To be able to check out where the, the locations of the houses that were gonna go up on steep slope and, and, and just to, just to see that, you know, there's a lot of places up on the road that goes up there that's actually being built on flat land up there as they go up, so it wasn't like this. The impression that I got, there wasn't gonna be this huge excavation to stick a house there. They, they picked out spots where it was flat and that's where, that's where it'd be going. Not saying that there's not gonna be any excavation, but my impression was is you're gonna, you're on a steep slope like this and they're gonna cut all this out. It wasn't like that at all, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments relating to the tour that was given there? No. I guess in line with, with that site visit, I've had meetings throughout the course of the last week and a half with every, every member of the board separately, not as a group, because I wanted to try to discuss particular issues that, you know, that have been given us to, given to us by the consultants and try to get a consensus as to which way the board as a whole tends to wanna go as far as providing Silo Ridge with direction on some of the more critical areas that were mentioned in the consultants' memos. So I'm gonna go through those, those areas that were discussed and I've also discussed these with staff from Silo Ridge Ventures and Discovery Corporation to get their input as to how receptive they would be to some of the concerns that were being expressed. And I'll try to pass along, I think, as accurately as possible what the consensus was between the planning board members and the folks from Silo. The first issue that we discussed was the location of the wastewater treatment plant. All consultants had made comment, all four consultants had made comment relating to their concern about the selected site for the wastewater treatment plant. That was discussed at our last meeting and since that time, with discussions with Silo, it's been agreed that the wastewater treatment plant is gonna be relocated from where it had been proposed to be put down to a southern portion next to the maintenance building that's gone proposed in the project. Hopefully, there might be also a benefit of gaining some extra open space, which is kind of very close right now. The numbers on open space are very close. By removing the wastewater treatment plant from where it was gonna be located, which was deemed not as open space, and moving it down to next to the wastewater, or down to the maintenance building area, where you've already got areas that are not designated open space, there could be a net gain, I hope, of open space for the entire project. That's the direction that we're providing with Silo, as to how we'd like to see things go at this point. It's not a determination they've gotta apply, they've gotta prove to us that with the new location, things will work. On all three, on all three areas that we're gonna be discussing here, they have to submit to these areas of concern and get approvals. The other area we discussed was Delverne Hill View Shed. Again, I think we've got agreement that all trees, shrubs, and so forth that are currently on the outside corner of Delverne Hill as you're coming down, and on the inside corner would be removed as follows. On the outside corner as you're coming down, basically starting at their property line all the way down to where there's a large grove of trees, hardwoods, on the right-hand side of the road that have been there for a long time. It's a triangular grove that kinda goes through the gut where the stream runs through. It's the only large grove of trees on the right-hand side. So if we remove all the trees, they'd be removing all the trees on that side of the road down to that point. On the inside of the corner, they'd be removing all trees down to the end of the cornfield, the last cornfield going down the hill on the left-hand side. So from beginning at the cornfield, the current, and on top of the hill, the beginning of that cornfield, all the way down through to the bottom of the last cornfield, all the trees would be removed there. And that for the plannings, the proposed plannings that had been submitted for those areas, that they'll all be removed. And all that we'll have, there'll be grass, and the grass will be maintained, cut, clean looking, and will really optimize the view shed of Delverne Hill. There was also discussion about the southern port, the lower portion of Delverne Hill. Again, as you're coming down on the right-hand side where there are currently berms and there are trees already planted there, that we're looking to see about allowing for that continuation of the plannings that they'd proposed and had submitted for earlier on. There would be some loss of view shed going up. In all honesty, it wasn't a view shed that was ever discussed in visuals or any other time prior to them putting in the berm and the, the trees that were planted down there this past few weeks, so. That's the, what we're looking at for Delverne Hill at this point. The last part that we talked about were the impacts on the steep slopes and the, the view shed, with the estate homes specifically, which are large, a number of homes are gonna be at the highest elevations on the side of the mountain to come across, come around Delverne Hill. What we're looking to have done possibly, and I need some input from our attorney on this and other people, what I talked about, what I'd like to see done up there is identify the two home sites that they previously had tarps put up for a couple of weeks back. We'd like to see if we can have those sites identify exactly where the house sites, the houses would be positioned in those sites, so that we could then have them erect tarps, white tarps initially, on the three walls that would be most exposed from that house. The west wall of all those homes will be into the bank, basically into the back of the mountain, so you wouldn't see those from either Route 22 or Delverne Hill. But the north, south, and east sides of those homes, you would. So what we're looking to do is have tarps put up to represent the three walls on those sides of those homes and as the same size as those homes. So if the house were gonna be 50 foot by 25 foot tall, the tarps should be 50 foot long by 25 foot high, representing that wall. And again, a three, a three-dimensional view essentially of what you'd see as you come down Delverne Hill or up Route 22. And to do a proper presentation, a presentation on that, we'd like to see about having the trees removed on the outside of that house site that would be removed when those sites would be done. I'm not sure how doable that is from a environmental standpoint?
I don't recommend you do that. I mean, that, that constitutes part of the project. I mean, they can actually erect the tarps between the trees without actually removing the trees and doing the disturbance and that probably is doubtful.
Well, honestly, too, I don't think there'll be that many trees that'd be removed 'cause those flats that they're gonna be building on, they're just, they're fairly open as it is, so. But either way, we're gonna at least get those tarps put up and let people see. And what I'm looking to do is have people invited, anybody can go there as far as taking a look at how those tarps look from Delverne Hill, from Route 22. Anybody can drive by there and take a look and see what you see. And then what I ask for them to do would be after three or four days or a week, whatever number we come up with, that they take those white tarps down and put up either brown tarps or gray tarps, which would represent more closely the color of the homes that they're gonna be allowed to use on, in those sites. And again, to give people an actual visual of what it's gonna look like versus the pictures and the visuals that were received on paper, a real-life example of what it might look like, so. And again, I think we've got an agreement from the Silo folks to go ahead and do that, so.
My only thought on that is that if you're gonna proceed in that way, do you wanna do this so members of the board can certainly see it, but you also wanna do it for members of the public to be aware of it?
Exactly.
You're gonna probably have a published notice that this kind of visual simulation or whatever you wanna call it is taking place on certain days and times and those kinds of things, so, you know, the public will be aware of it and can drive around and evaluate that as they see fit.
Right. Now, that's the intent, I think, is to get as many people to take a look at it as they want to, so that everybody can see it. And the sites that are selected are the two most prominent sites, so. And the sites that are selected are the two most prominent sites, so if it's, if there's an impact there, it's gonna be a problem, we'll have to take a look at it. If there's not an impact, well, then we know we have.
So we would avoid having trees cut at this point?
At this point, certainly.
And then depending on what we see with the white tarps, we may not require that.
May not need it anyways, yeah.
If you don't see it, you're not gonna see it.
When we were on the site, we were talking about cutting the trees for the owner's purpose, in terms of the view from the house.
Right.
And there were different recommendations from different people on how to do that.
Yeah, that's the trees we were talking about removing, the ones that they'd be removing for the.
But I think you have to clear that with a DLC, right?
Oh, we're not, we're not gonna do that right now anyways, so, from what Dave's saying, we can't do that right now.
Oh.
We'll leave the trees up and just see how it looks with the trees. And you might be able to see enough of the tarps to know what.
Leaves are falling. So we're not, we're not clearing anything up there?
No.
So the tarps have been up for three weeks?
Yeah, are all three sides?
Yep. And they're actually bigger than the houses that were.
Well, they're kinda, they were kinda down there from the wind, weren't they?
Yeah, no, we'll put it, we'll proper up again, but they've been for a while up there.
And that's the white tarps?
Yep. So we'll do that again.
And Norm, there isn't much leaf powder, you know, this time of year, so it's almost be able to dig pretty good inside.
All right, still, I think, like what Dave just mentioned too, I think we do need to kinda make notice on it and let people know that the opportunity's gonna be there to see them. What we do as far as offering a location from Delverne Hill for people to take a look.
They're, they can park on our offices as one and then walk out. I guess they can park on the side of the road. It's not that safe, but.
Would you be available to give tours, kind of like you did with the planning board, or somebody available to take them up to the sites that are in question?
Yeah.
Would you prefer to do that, or would it be better to set up a couple of times on different dates where people can be picked up maybe with a bus or some other way and just taken up there as a group and?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that too.
I don't know if there'd be enough people that would be interested in doing that, but.
But they let, let us know, so then we'll know. And they'll figure out how to accommodate it.
We can put it out to the public and have a date that they have to respond by?
Would that work, Dave, as far as legality of it? Setting up for, putting out a notice, letting the people know that there'll be the ability to go ahead and take a, take a look at that and giving a cutoff date that they need to respond by, so we know how many people we're gonna have that would wanna do it?
Oh, I don't know if you're looking necessarily for a response, because you're gonna hold out a public hearing, people can certainly respond at that time, if they wanna feel like they can write in, that's.
No, I'm talking about a response as far as knowing how many people we wanna go.
Oh.
To see what the need is.
I mean, it's up to you whether you wanna organize kind of like a bus tour, or if you wanna just publish notice that tours are gonna occur on these specific dates and times, you know, and at this location, and if people wanna show up, they show up. You know, you have maybe one or two of those.
Well, again, the problem there is parking. Where do you, where do you have everybody go?
Well, they paid you at all for parking in his office lot, you know, and so the notice could basically explain that. I would also say if you're gonna do this, you should probably do it in the next week or two, because we got a really snow. You gotta have all white snow cover, looking at, you know, white tarps. I don't know if that's gonna impact the.
Gray tarps up there.
Well, I mean, and don't forget, if they go up, you know, if they're looking, if they're up at Keen Stud, they'll, they'll see, they'll everything there, so they'll be able to pick it out also, so they don't, you're not even necessarily need to.
Yeah, from Delverne Hill, you won't see them. The only place where you might see them is from Keen Stud.
Well, Keen Stud, I mean, people can certainly go there on their own without having, without needing to be taken.
Right, we have to, they don't have to be worried about parking or anything like that, because.
We need a, what, ten-day notice or something like that?
Yeah, probably five.
How about if we were to do a ten-day notice, Pedro, for a weekend? That way, it's gonna offer more people the ability and your parking lot's gonna be empty.
That'd be great.
And then you could have somebody down there that could park down at your, your office location.
Definitely.
And give, so, I guess Larissa, if we could put out a public notice that we'll shoot for the I think we need more than one day, just one day, Saturday?
I would say a few days, probably.
Trying to think what, um.
I think a couple of days, because I mean, if you're offering that, but like I said, you got Keen Stud right up there, you have to worry about parking or anything.
Right.
You just pull right up, up there.
People are gonna be able to do, yeah, once the public notice is out, they're gonna be able to go by it anytime they want.
Right.
And write in on the public comment or, you know, have a public hearing comment on it, so.
How about, how about we go for Saturday and Sunday, that, not this weekend coming up, but obviously it'd be the following weekend?
It would have to be the twenty-second or twenty-third, if you need a ten-day notice. Those are ten days, we're just getting seventeen, get a position tomorrow.
Do we need ten days, Dave, or?
I mean, there's no requirement of, 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 this kind of thing.
Right.
We think we only have five days notice.
Right, five was good. Oh, that's a good, it's more like a nine. Yeah, that's better.
But a notice in the, you know, on the town website and put it in the newspaper.
Right. And wanna do like a, an eleven o'clock, one o'clock?
Whatever's best for, whatever's best for the public. We can keep it open all day. If they want.
Just have somebody there?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't, why don't we run it from like, let's say, nine to, nine to three, on Saturday and Sunday?
Yep.
And people can arrive anytime they want. Maybe somebody there to take them up through.
And that will be the weekend of?
Next weekend.
Next weekend.
Fifteenth and sixteenth. Not this weekend, the following weekend.
How are you gonna give the notice?
In a, in a paper? What's that?
Isn't it a weekly, don't you give notice in the weekly papers? We don't have a daily paper.
I understand it.
How are you going, how are people?
I'm, I'm, if you hold on, if you hold on a minute, I'm gonna try to find out.
The paper, the paper doesn't come out every, every week.
Can you touch your microphone now?
The Lakeville Journal doesn't come down, come out every week, so we're gonna need to decipher when it comes out and when I can do that.
It comes out every Thursday.
Every Thursday, yeah, yeah.
I have a cutoff date, but I think if I put it in tomorrow, it could go out by.
It'd be out.
By, it comes out on Thursday. Doesn't really give too much time.
So it would be by next Thursday?
If it's out next Thursday, then people are going to have to have to go that weekend, or they'll have another, a whole week.
I'm gonna get there, just hold on a minute.
Yeah, our paper is every other week, but I think we put stuff on.
Excuse me, this is live on TV. My pro.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be going to the Milton News like we're required to do for the notice, public notice. It'll be in next week's paper, so people will have notice prior to the date it's gonna occur. And we're also gonna be doing the second, can we also do the gray tarps, Pedro, then?
Yeah.
What I'd like to do is for the following weekend, and that same notice, you know, let people know that the following weekend, they will have the same thing, same hours, same days, with different colored tarps. The colored tarps are gonna represent the actual house colors.
And the town website?
Yeah.
So notice is you can do two things. It's gonna say you're gonna have a formal meeting on this date.
Contest.
And these tarps are gonna be up from X period to Y period, and if you wanna drive around to any vantage point that you want, take a look at it, you're welcome to do that. So that's, that's the purpose of it. So if you miss the formal presentation, you can't make it for whatever reason, you still have the opportunity to drive around and take a look.
Right. All right.
Yeah, like, like I've mentioned, they've been up there for three weeks.
Right.
I have no idea.
I know, so we'll, we'll keep them up there. So we'll keep them up there, so as you drive around, you can see.
Well, no, no, there wasn't, no, there wasn't a need for, they weren't required to give a notice, they just did this on their own.
But the implication is that we've had it up for three weeks, so people have a chance to see.
No, we're gonna keep it up. What I'm saying is we're gonna, we're gonna keep them up as well.
I'm not hearing that.
Yeah, they, they put it up there for our site visit, so we could have a look at it when we went up there to have a scale. So now we're just looking to continue that with the public.
Thank you. Something else, Pedro, or?
No, no, those, we just wanted clarification whether we were clearing some trees or not, so.
Okay. And then the other part that we wanted to do is a presentation on the SWIP report, which has been requested by members of the public, so we have Amanda here from VHB to do that for us. And we also have Julie Mangriello, our town engineer, uh, engineer, that if we have questions that need to be asked by, asked of her, that's fine.
Should we turn lights on, Norm, or? That'd be a bad idea.
At least that's all.
We can't turn them down, right?
No, we just have to turn off one of them.
That's good. I can still see that one. It's all yours, Amanda.
Good evening, Amanda De Chazade from VHB. I'm joined with Jason Chiang, also from VHB. So last time we met, we were requested to introduce what stormwater management is, provide a summary of the project and how we've designed and reviewed and the process that's gone on for quite some time already. So appropriately, what is stormwater? Stormwater is basically the rain that falls, flows, does not get absorbed into the ground and continues to filtrate throughout. And it is absolutely a significant source of water pollution, and that's why we do have such concerns. That's why there's stormwater management. And through different engineering, construction, site maintenance and public outreach efforts, we do address what runoff, quality and quantity have to come, what each project, each construction project, site, and additional municipal efforts have to be taken in order to keep our waters clean. So what exactly governs the stormwater management? It's actually the DEC. So there's the Speedy's General Permit, which is currently at the GP 01001 form. And what we do is we issue an NOI, a notice of intent, to the DEC. With that, they review our stormwater management plan. It's based on the design manual, which is created by the DEC. And it is additionally coordinated with the town engineer. Julie Mangriello has reviewed this particular project's multiple SWIPS. But again, it's regulated by the DEC. So what is SWIP? The Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. It's the actual report that's created. It's the management for the site, it's the design that goes into it. So what sections, these are just the sections that go into the report, and we give a general introduction to the project, the project site, the existing conditions. There's hydraulic analysis. I'm gonna go through each one of these points. But ultimately, this SWIP is issued to the DEC, and it's also issued to the construction contractor, the onsite contractor, and it's his guideline. So Silo Ridge, a lot of you are very familiar with the six hundred seventy-six acres that we're considering. And currently, there, there was an eighteen-hole golf course with a clubhouse, maintenance building and office. And when reviewing the SWIP and doing calculations and the analyses, this is the site that we've considered. These are the constraints, existing structures. What are we proposing to put on there? Renovating the eighteen-hole golf course, putting two hundred twenty-four residential units. This is all, this is the MDP plan. We, the SWIP is created to account for the entire site. It's the residential units, it's the amenity buildings, it's the wastewater treatment plant, it's the winery restaurant. So it's not a piece of the project, it's the entire project. Including all the site improvements such as the road and the utilities. So what is this hydraulic analysis? It goes hand-in-hand with soil, land use. This is my site, pretty. Looks like spaghetti, but what it actually is, is the red lines indicate the different soil groups, and this is how you do hydraulic analysis. You consider each individual contributing catchment area and what types of soils are created, and you do some very interesting calculations to decipher what your runoff is, what your current flow rates are. This site has four existing discharge points that we'll look at from the proposed point of view as well. So the four discharge points are because there are only four points that the stormwater actually leaves the site. You don't see my, I'm sorry. You don't see the, I'm trying to point, but you can't see, I apologize. So the magenta area is where the wastewater treatment plant, I'm sorry, where the maintenance facility area is. And that's where the discharge, the actual water will leave the site. Everything in the magenta area flows to that point. The yellow area is the largest area, and every bit of that topo drains to the New York State DEC Wetland AM-15. Green area, also substantial area, that's draining to the Cascade Aminia Brook. And the blue area is the wastewater treatment plant. Understandably so, will be revised once we relocate and remove that disturbance. But those are your drainage areas, those are your overall drainage areas. So each one of those subcatchment areas create these larger watersheds. So what do we do once we get this information? We run a bunch of calculations and some analyses to figure out that our existing conditions per sub watershed, A, B, C, D's, we've labeled them. What happens when you put these proposed conditions? Once you put in this impervious surface, once you've changed the hydrology of it, you have to make sure that there's no net increase throughout the entire site. So as you can see, there is no net increase. Each subcatchment, each sub watershed for the one, ten and hundred-year storm event results in either zero or even greater reduction. And we have three areas that we actually have almost twenty percent or more. So we are not increasing the flow rate, and that's, I think that's what people don't understand, that our design is purposely intended to reduce the flow rate so that there is no downstream destruction, or, you know, you have issues. Yes, we do have different storm events that are occurring, but by regulations, we have to make sure we do not increase for the one, ten and one hundred year, and this shows this. And it's been reviewed. So once you get past the hydraulic analysis of the project, you start considering how do I design for it? And first newest part is the runoff reduction volume. It's called the RV. It's the DEC's latest and greatest change to the, basically what the permit requires. And the RV is how can I use green infrastructure to reduce my water quality volume? There are specific factors involved with the soils that you're draining to and the practices that you're using. And it's all contained within the DEC Stormwater Design Manual. Our project, as a minimum RV requirement, says that we need to do six point one-two acre feet of water quality volume that's considered runoff reduction. Our project proposes twenty-four point oh-six. So even though there's been question of green infrastructure practices that we should be implementing on site, we're already doing almost four times the required minimum. What are those practices? Conservation of natural area, which as you all know, especially that we're using the open space formula for, you know, an RDO, we are conserving a significant amount of area. There's sheet flow to ripper area and buffers and filter strips, vegetated, vegetated open swales. These are just what the standard practices are indicated in the manual. So the site actually does conserve four hundred sixty-four acres on site. And we do propose the ripper area and buffer strip adjacent to the AM-15. Those are what we're taking credit for. That's what gave me my twenty-four acre feet. There are additional practices that are being considered and will be implemented.
Can you go back to the green infrastructure?
Can we do questions after?
Okay.
Thank you. So just looking at some of the additional measures, we are, we do have vegetated swales along the roadside. We are putting in permeable pavement, and with our next submission, we will give you a quantity in the SWIP. I know it's been requested, so we will be quantifying these additional measures. But additionally, each one of the homes, based on the homeowners association, will be implementing additional green struc, green infrastructure. That's gonna be part of the design guidelines, and it's part of what the homeowners association wants to promote. They wanna promote, and there's gonna be people who wanna put a green roof or put a rain garden, so there will be additional measures. But right now, this is what we're showing on site. And again, we're already providing for. And again, we're already providing four times the required, the minimum required. Hand-in-hand with RV is water quality volume. And your water quality volume is the amount of water that you have to treat before discharging. And as part of the previous time the project was in front of the board, the project committed to meeting East of Hudson standards. East of Hudson standards brings us above and beyond the water quality volume that we would have to, more on the order of more than two and a half times what we would have to do normally. But in order to protect the hills' pond weed, we have committed to that. And as it stands, the East of Hudson required WQV is 33.9 acre feet. We're providing 39.93. So again, above and beyond what the regulations ask us to do. So what's stormwater management? On this site, we're able to do extended ponds, sand filters, dry detention ponds, and also use underground detention pipe where the site is a little more constrained. We have the, our largest feature onsite is the Green Island Pond connected with the irrigation pond. We've now connected those two. Ultimately, majority of this site will drain to that pond before it gets to AM-15. So that's providing not only water quality, but also water quantity. We have additional measures throughout the golf course with stormwater management ponds. Just going to stand up for a second. All of your yellow little areas are infiltration basins. So those are additional stormwater management practices that are infiltrating and cleaning the water. We have, these little peach areas are sand filters located at some of those areas that ponds weren't practical, as well as by the wastewater treatment plant and in these areas on Phase 3. And all of our blue areas are our stormwater management practice detention, extended detention ponds. So what's the next component of a SWIP? It's the erosion and sediment control. There is guidelines. It's not in the DEC, but the DEC refers to the New York State Standards and Specifications for Erosion and Sediment Control, following the latest, which is the 2005 version. And there's a number of practices. I just listed a few that we're actually using onsite. With that, there's also maintenance and inspection. There's maintenance and inspection of both your erosion control practices as well as your stormwater management practices and your erosion and sediment control. So it gives you guidelines for inspection and it gives you guidelines for maintenance. Again, standard, it comes right out of the manual. You provide that to the contractor, the contractor, it's part of your SWIP, it's part of what they have to comply with. Additionally, the inspection for anything, any disturbance greater than five acres requires an inspector to be onsite twice a week, which we're currently completing. And as if all of that wasn't enough to swallow, we have additional environmental commitments that the project is adhering to. We have this extremely elaborate buffer management plan that has been coordinated with Dr. Clemens. And just to give you magnitude, the buffers around the natural wetlands, when we say "natural wetlands," we're talking about AM-15, we're talking about the Cascade, Armenia Brook. We're increasing those buffers by 14%. And the ones around the constructed wetlands, constructed just being anything that was man-made, is 41%. So we're increasing the buffers around all of our waters. It's taking a minute, sorry. Hand-in-hand with the buffer management plan is the Habitat Management Plan, also known as the HMP. This is the grass plan. This is, it's considered with the buffers as well because it has to do with the treatment of the golf course. I know everyone is concerned about what's going to be sprayed. Well, in the HMP and the NRMP, I forgot what that stands for. There are guidelines. And these are being reviewed by Duchess Land Conservancy and its Audubon. And every agency that has review privileges to this site is reviewing, is reviewing as well as the town. So that's your overview of the stormwater management plan and what the SWIP requires. But I just wanted to quickly go to the golf course because I know there's questions of what's going on there? Well, what did you do? Did you do it right? We have a permit in place for the golf course work. We did receive Army Corps approval as well as the SPO waiver. And we're implementing erosion and sediment control measures currently. You have hydro seeding, which is when you see the green spray across areas that have been disturbed. Double-row silt fence is something that was required as part of the findings along all of our water bodies. Stabilization is when you throw, when you see sometimes the hay thrown around some disturbed areas. Tremendous temporary sediment basins. It gives the site an opportunity to drain some of the water and settle out all the sediment prior to going to the discharge waters. And I think there is over 20-something onsite for the full build. And these are a typical temporary swell with stone check dams. These are all onsite currently. So these pictures all came from Silo. And just to give you a little peek, and I like sharing these, I can't take any credit for it because it's a beautiful silo picture, but this is what some of the areas, when it's completed, look like. This is the golf course right now. This is a completed area. This is what you look at when you look down. Questions? Absolutely. I just finished it, so I apologize for not having copies in advance.
Thank you, Dave. I was thinking of too.
I made sure that it was clean.
Could you go back to the green infrastructure page, please?
Atan, you may have to go up to the mic so she can answer your questions with the microphone. Or you have to go back.
To the green infrastructure page, where you list the rain gardens, green roofs, swales, that, yeah. Okay. Could you possibly show us on the site where you're going to be implementing the rain garden, the porous pavement, the vegetated open swales, and the, the green roof and the rain tanks? Could you just point it out on the site? Because it's not in the SWIP. And if it's not in the SWIP, it's not going to happen.
Okay, well, that's your opinion. Your...
So it's not in the plan unless it's in the conservation plan, is it?
Can I clarify something?
Okay.
What's in the SWIP is the project meeting the minimum required RV by four times. Things were moving on this project. Things are still moving on this project. So there were some commitments that we did not make because we know it's moving. The roads are having vegetated swales. So they are shown additional. We have permeable pavement. And yes, that's in the plans. It says it on the site plans. It specifically says urban green pavers, those two magenta areas. All of those green swales are currently shown in the grading plan. They are there. Those infiltration bases, those, that's all there. The SWIP was a document that was moving quickly. We far above met that requirement of that six acre feet. We showed 24 acre feet. We do not have to show more. We will be implementing additional. We will be.
Is that in writing as an addendum to the...
Actually, the planning board will be reviewing guidelines. Julie and Dave have reviewed guidelines that will require green infrastructure. So yes, it is part of it, but it doesn't need to be part of the SWIP because the SWIP references and will reference the HOA and the design guidelines.
Can I just add, address a question to Julie, please, for one second, for...
I, I think that the slide with all the practices, can you go back to that slide? Can you go back to the slide with all the practices? So this is the list from the DEC manual of all of the allowed practices from the DEC manual. It doesn't mean that all of these practices are used at Silo Ridge. I think, nor required. These, this is, it's like a menu. And you can go through when you're designing a project and pick what fits best for your project. So this is just the available list that you can pick from.
So can you tell us which ones are in the SWIP of those practices?
I show you.
The first two.
I've showed you.
For Julie, one second, Julie. Do you think that the Stormwater Manual recommended green infrastructure practices, requirements, and recommendations are met by this SWIP? That's what I'd love to know. Your view as the town engineer?
Yes, they are. Now, as Amanda said, they, they do talk about having the permeable pavers. And those specifically aren't in the SWIP yet. That's one of the things that I had asked for.
It is mentioned.
It's mentioned.
It's mentioned in the green infrastructure.
It's true. It's mentioned, but it's not detailed in calculation-wise in terms of so much square-footage. All right. So it, it talks about it in the documents, it talks about it in the narrative of the SWIP, but there aren't, you know, the backup square-footage calculations. But all of the other information that's in the SWIP, the conservation of areas, the sand filter, the ponds, all of that already meets the minimum required, goes beyond the minimum required. So because Silo Ridge is saying that they're going to provide pervious pavers, you know, permeable pavement, however they want to call it, my comment was that if they're going to say that they're going to be doing these things, they should really take credit for it in the SWIP. It makes more Excel spreadsheet work for them. But if they're going to be saying it in some documents that they're going to be using it, they might as well take credit for it in the SWIP, even though without it, they already meet the requirements.
And again, just for the board, just to reiterate, we do not need to take credit for the additional practices that we are implementing on the individual home sites because the site is beyond and above the requirement. Because again, it's the DEC requirement that we are meeting. We're above and beyond what is required of us. And I don't know how to say that any other way.
So you mentioned the buffers and that there was an increase of, I forget the percentage. What, how many, like the buffers around the Armenia Cascade Brook and the other wetlands? What, in, in linear feet, what are those buffers now?
I don't know them. I have them in that beautiful Habitat Management Plan. It's thousands of linear feet.
Well, I don't mean, yeah, I mean just distance. Like what is the buffer?
Amanda.
Oh, I'm sorry, width-wise. Minimum that we consider as a buffer would be the 30 feet. And then there's also additional 50 and 100 foot. So that's all categorized in the Habitat Management Plan.
Okay, the minimum is 30.
Yes, 30-foot map, that map.
Yeah, 30-foot, 30-foot minimum. One thing, the thing should be pointed out, the 14% is an increase from the previous project, from existing conditions, is actually we're, we're, we're protecting natural water bodies, we're buffering up to 99% of all of them. So the DEC has 100-foot buffers. The Cascadian Brook has mainly 100-foot buffers. There's a couple of sections that have 30 and 50, but the majority is actually 100.
That's the yellow area, that is the 30. So the yellow area is on 30. Green, 100. And it's actually lines showing up, showing 30 marks along the line of the 50 and the edge of the green.
Thank you.
The yellow area is 30. The red line is 30. The yellow area is 50. The green is 100. I apologize. Thank you.
Can you just tell us something about how those buffers work?
These buffers? It's protected areas. There are restrictions on the spraying, there are restrictions on the mowing, the cutting.
I mean, like, to me, what you're saying is that the buffers are there to protect from storms that would create an overflow. So they catch water somehow?
It's not an over, it's, no, these buffers, these buffers have to do with filtering and cleaning the water before it actually reaches the...
So it's not the quantity or the rush of the water?
No, not the, not the...
Quality of the water?
Not the buffer management plan. The buffer management plan is intended because of the grass types and what's going to happen with the golf course proximity to homes. So the buffer management plan is separate from water quality.
The buffers sure has nothing to do with the water quality.
Right.
So what are the buffers for? Just...
These buffers are because sometime in between 2003 and 2009, it was requested that a buffer management plan be created for this project to protect the waters that discharge ultimately to the Armenia Cascade Brook and be...
To protect them, I'm sorry, to protect them from what? I'm trying to reduce it to the lowest common denominator so that everyone can...
It's a combination. It's, there's a combination of disturbance to the immediate area adjacent to it. So some of those buffers...
What kind of a disturbance? A disturbance to the water quality or to flooding?
It has nothing to do with flooding.
Amanda. We're going to have actually, part of the whole buffer management plan that was prepared with, in conjunction with Dr. Clemens as well as Audubon, was in order to make sure that the golf course complies with the sanctuary program that they have. We've requested Audubon to come in and do a presentation on their program and what they've been able to achieve on golf courses. And the idea was that we could, that we could have a golf course, but improve the habitat value of that golf course and not just be a place where we're spraying a bunch of chemicals and those chemicals then go and get into the, into the streams. Part of those mitigation measures is an IPM, which is Integrated... Yeah. And, and there's a lot of that has to do with, the buffers help reduce the, the amount, the pollution that gets into the stream, also clean the water and slow it down. So we're going to have them come, or the idea was to have them come, what's the date, Mike? December 18th and do a presentation in Armenia about their, their programs, what they've been able to achieve in other golf courses and what they will look to achieve here. I think this will be the first silver sanctuary golf course in New York State.
But again, the buffer management plan is not only for the golf course.
Correct.
Because it's also where the areas, the development is adjacent to a water body. So its intent is to protect the quality of what is going in.
Is that right?
Well, no, Jason didn't do the buffer...
It's not used for water quality calculations, but it's for...
No, no, it's not used for water quality... I introduced him.
I did.
Jason, engineer from VHB.
Okay, thank you. Jason, what?
Chiang.
So, so I think to your question, there's two types of buffers. For example, on the DEC, we have a, there's a restriction, you can't disturb within 100 feet of the DEC wetland, right? There were other areas that, for example, Dr. Clemens wanted to protect and make sure there was no disturbance in close proximity, which was, I forget the name of, Wetland JJ, which is a wetland up in the hill where we used to have houses, and they wanted to protect salamanders. So in there, we have what is called a conservation buffer. So there's no disturbance, we're leaving it as is. Then you have water quality buffers, which are those that, while we're disturbing some of those areas when we build a golf course or we build a residential component, we're actually turning them back into taller grasses. There's different implementations, such as spraying system. So it's a combination of different things. But I think Jason's trying to explain is, for purposes of our SWIP, we didn't take into consideration any water quality associated with any of those buffers that we did, other than the standard practices such as the, the area that is going to be left in conservation easement. And I think you did take into consideration the wetland AM-15.
Well, that's a vegetated, that's the riparian filter strip. But that's, it's, it's two different items. And that's why when I went to, these are additional... are additional commitments, this is beyond what the SWIP requires. These are commitments that the project has made at the town's request.
So, so in summary, a lot of these things that, that we are doing, not only are they going to meet the DEC requirements, but also going to increase it drastically. We are going to be including, as per Julie's comment, some of the practices that we're doing, such as pervious surfaces and others that are easy to quantify. I think trying to quantify every single buffer that is in here and try to put it into a calculation where the DEC is going to say, yeah, you're right, is going to be extremely encompassing. So while we know that some of those areas will provide water quality and will provide reduction runoff, we're not, we're not, we're not quantifying or taking credit for it in terms of the SWIP.
And the reason behind that also is that some of them don't meet the DEC criteria for what a vegetated swell is or what a buffer strip is. There are slope requirements. So what the buffer management calls a buffer and what the SWIP calls a buffer are two different things. So there are reasons why we are not taking credit for certain items. But it doesn't mean that you completely lose the habitat value, which is what the habitat management plan is for. And again, the HMP is something that's been through Dr. Clemens' review over and over again.
I was thinking, you talked to Dr. Clemens, it's kind of like, if you have a wetland on your property, he says you have to stay within 100 foot, 150 foot, whatever it is, they're just basically saying, this is the line that's being drawn. You don't go any closer to that wetland than this, so that nothing is disturbed, whether it's water quality, the animals that live within it, the animals come out of the water onto the land, the edge of the land, just, it's an awful mess area, it's everything.
Yeah, what I'm trying to figure out is, since the tool we're using to protect the water system is the buffer, what kind of a product we're going to get as the water comes out into the stream?
Well, that's what the water quality volume, the water quality volume and those design practices are what, are going to clean the water before it's discharged off-site. This is just additional measures.
So one of the biggest pollutants to stormwater and to open water bodies is fertilizer and pesticide, which is why it's so important at a golf course to make sure you have these buffers so that people aren't fertilizing right up to the edge of the water and the fertilizer's going directly into the water. So this is where the buffers come in, is it'll keep the landscapers so far away, you know, depending on where they are, whether it's 30 feet, 50 feet, 100 feet, so that fertilizer or pesticides aren't directly injected into the water bodies, essentially. So if it were a DEC water body, like the one big wetland, DEC requires to be 100 feet away. You can't get any closer than 100 feet. All of the other water bodies are much smaller, even the Army Corps, the federal wetlands, they have no associated buffer. So you can go right up to the edge of the wetland and essentially do whatever you want. Silo Ridge has made the commitment that they're going to go above that and provide these 30, 50, 100 foot buffers, which will help keep, in particular, the fertilizers and pesticides out of the water bodies. Because eventually, all this water will come together and end up in, in the Armenia Cascade Brook. So that's the, the primary part of the buffer is to keep people away from the water. You're buffering people and people activities. That's what it's there for.
Can I ask one more question to you, Julie, please?
In your comments to the planning board, Julie, you mentioned some concern about the fill near the entrance for planting trees, and you also mentioned some concerns about steep slopes. Could you describe those and why you were concerned, please?
The area around the, the main entrance is in a floodplain. So one of Silo Ridge's proposals is to plant trees in there, which would require filling some of the floodplain, which of course is not generally recommended, but as a mitigation measure, they're going to provide additional flood storage volume in the ponds on either side of the main entrance, and they're going to be providing the information required in the town's flood development permit application. So once all of that information gets submitted, then hopefully that should address all of my concerns. And then regarding the steep slopes, it's just what's in the town zoning code regarding work on the steep slopes, trying to minimize it as much as possible, trying to, you know, keep it as little as possible, and if they do have to do it, making sure that there's the right erosion and sediment control measures in place.
Are you, are you...
Are you satisfied, Julie, that there are enough bio-retention areas? I know we have these big, wonderful, big, swirly ponds in the middle, they're great. But are you, are you happy that there, that there are enough swales and bio-retention areas in addition to that to give us the extra level of protection during storms that are more than 100%, I mean 100, 100 years? For example, if we had two storms in a row five days later?
The green infrastructure practices that are required by the DEC are not intended to help for the 100-year storm. They're not meant for flooding. They're meant for what's called the water quality volume, which is the most common amount of rainfall, which is small amount. So it's called the 90% storms. Usually, it's an inch of rain, depending on where you are in the state. They're doing additional, because they're doing the East of Hudson Standard, so it's the one-year rainfall. But that's meant for the smaller amounts of rain in order, lots of people have done lots of studies at lots of universities in lots of states, and the Chesapeake Bay is a big one, and they've found that it's those little frequent storms that tend to bring the most pollutants from the land into the water, all those fertilizers, pesticides, automobile greases and oils and all of that stuff. So by capturing and treating the smaller storms that occur more frequently does more for water quality in the water bodies than just capturing the 100-year storms. So the vegetated swales and the sand filters are all good for the, are all good for the streams and the, the smaller storms, but when it comes to the big storms, that's when you need to have the big ponds. So it's, they're related, but they're separate. DEC treats them separately, you have to approach the design separately.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions? No? I'm sure they'll ask if they do. Anybody aboard? No? No. Just, yeah, do me a favor. I've had people ask me, the Hills Pond weed, can you just explain why that's so important? And you can't? Julie? How about you, Dave?
I believe that it's a protected plan due to the DEC regulations.
Dr. Clemens, it's one of Dr. Clemens.
That's about it.
It's a protected plan. You try to protect it.
That's about it.
Water quality around where it is.
Some of your measures are specific to...
Yeah, that, why that particular plan, it's on the list. Sorry, I'm not a...
That's alright.
It was actually the, the implementation of East of Hudson Standards and the buffers were started by a different consultant back then, which was Karen Chanelle McDonald, I think is her name. And with, then we, we worked that into the buffer management plan and East of Hudson Standards, and part of it was the pa, um, pond weed.
Hills Pond.
Hills Pond.
Pond weed.
Even though that whole wetland's been getting silted for the last year and a half during construction of the, of the landfill that is there.
And again, the entire site is doing the East of Hudson, where it's, the entire site is not...
But it is a commitment we did. We are proud to do an environmentally sensitive project. We do want to commit to that, and I think, you know, the Audubon International presentation's going to do really good because we were looking actually online, there's a couple of presentations, one they did in Cornell, and it explains that now they have a lot of data from their previous golf courses and courses that they've been working on where they can prove where the water quality value, how it was before they started implementing their techniques to where it is right now. And it's not just about buffers, it's about how we manage the pesticides, the pesticides that are allowed to use, what time of years, what kind of grasses we can use and not use that, in different areas, different grasses grow better or, you know, that are more susceptible to, you know, to prone, you know, they're not as, they don't get as many diseases and so forth. So it is pretty, it's pretty elaborate, I think it's 300 pages? 260 pages, so it's, it gets into how we, you know, like right now, we're doing, we're doing water quality monitoring, we're doing a micro invertebrae, micro invertebrate analysis we do during construction and post-construction. The way we can, you know, manage how some of these things, you know, we can really track how our implementation actually, the results of our implementation move forward.
And part of the implementation is that this is all a stepped process because nothing is just directly spilled, very little is spilling directly to one of the water bodies. It's generally going from a stream to one stormwater management practice to the next stormwater, you know, it's stepping. So it's that, that same process that was implemented on the previous project, that bio-infiltration stepped, you know, treatment train, thank you, Mike. So it's the treatment train of one practice to the next, so it's, it's getting cleaner and cleaner as it goes.
Is the Audubon presentation will be here at the town hall or is it going to be at your office?
No, no, we were thinking of doing it at a town hall. Yeah, I don't think it's going to, it's not going to be so much about Silo Ridge, it's going to be more about their program, what they do, what they've been able to achieve in, in order of, you know, all the program, and then they'll talk a little bit about Silo, but it would be mostly about what, you know, how they're going to be involved with our project and so forth.
I mean, I think that'd be a good presentation for, you know, the planning board members to attend if they can do that, to just get some additional information about how that program is going to work since, you know, they provided documents on that program for you guys to review and approve.
How long the presentation is it?
I haven't discussed it with them. Though, you know, there's several on the internet, but I'm assuming it's probably going to be half hour.
It's at the planning board meeting, right?
Right.
Oh, it's during the planning board meeting, oh, that's great.
We'll be here for it.
Great.
How long, it's an hour and a half?
There are, anybody can look at them online, there's actually a great presentation that they did with Cornell University that actually was, it was very informative, and people want to see those, they can see it, I think it's on YouTube or...
Alright, any other questions? Okay, I think, Barb?
Mr. Chairman, I understand you've graciously expanded this from just not only a very comprehensive stormwater pollution prevention plan, but I think you also addressed at points the habitat management as well. I'd like to ask if you could address what I would view as the third of those issues, and that would be the wastewater treatment, which I know is right now in, excuse me, excuse the pun, but fluid, because it's moving from one location to another. But under the modified, I think the revised MDP, it contemplated that instead of having the treated effluent going into Old Scrabble Hole, now the, whatever, Island Green Pond, I think you call it, Island Green and the other, the secondary pond associated with it. The revised MDP contemplated that all output would flow into the Cascade Brook area. Now, maybe that will have to be, that will not be happening anymore. So at the risk of overextending my welcome, can I ask, where is it going?
You want to answer that? Sure. But the DEC will review that also, Mr. Wu?
DEC is...
Yes.
Yeah, so a couple of things, that's actually an excellent question. The, the reason why we actually had moved it to the Cascade Armenia Brook was the DEC wanted that. We're treating the water from the wastewater treatment plant to tertiary standards, simple terms, someone allegedly can drink it. Given that it's a trout stream, they wanted to have clean water going to the trout stream because they have, you know, a lot of pollutants coming from the road as well as the pond. We were going to be having to supply an additional discharge point because they didn't want it just going right directly into there. Once we move, we're looking to move the treatment plant down to the south, we're going to have to find similarly another discharge points that the DEC would have, is going to have to, again, they're going to have to approve it as well as the health department. It'll probably be, we're going to have to put it into a couple, two outfalls again, and probably into some of the stormwater management ponds, so it'll get infiltrated through there and ultimately exit the site after that.
Alright, I think that concludes the Silo portion of this meeting.
Thank you.
We have left, minutes left?
We should be in touch today and over email, and we also need your copy of the...
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept our minutes from October 16.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
We have any business?
Do you have anything else there? I think you're on your end.
Let me make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to close our meeting.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.